All right. It is six forty-five and we will go ahead and reconvene to our regular board meeting. Can I get a motion in a second to reconvene?
I'll move.
Motion by member Georgino, second by member Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Announcements, tonight's meeting is being digitally recorded. And moving on to item number eight, pledge of allegiance led by member Bell.
All right, everyone please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance. Hand up your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, member Bell. All right, item number nine is announcements of actions taken in closed session. And we did have an action, so I will go ahead and read out the, the action. In closed session, the board took the following actions. By unanimous vote, the board took action to approve a settlement agreement regarding OAH case number two zero two two zero three zero nine one five. And yeah, it was unanimous, unanimous vote. I think that's all I have to say, right, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure, he's done a lot of these. Okay, all right, so we move on to item number ten. Is, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, so we will move on to item number eleven for approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion in a second?
I'll move.
Okay, motion by member Sneed, second by, who was that? Okay, member Bell. And preferential vote from student board member King?
Yes.
Yes, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Moving on, we have an item number twelve, we do not have any special recognition presentations tonight. We'll move on to item thirteen, public comment on agendized items. Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay, no public comment. Moving on to item number fourteen, which is community update. I will just update the community on our special meeting that we just had regarding the superintendent search. We had a very good working session. We have, we received updates on all the stakeholder feedback that we have received. There was some information shared about some technical difficulties with the survey, the online survey, which is being fixed, so there are still opportunities to give feedback. The next step really is to, the timeline was shared, and so we're hopeful that we can stick to that timeline and have our final selections done by the first week, I think, of October, if I'm not mistaken. So that's kind of the goal. And we reviewed a lot of the feedback, that was all anonymous, so we didn't know who was within what group. And now, and we also reviewed a sample of an online brochure that's going to kind of be the advertisement for our position. And so we've had, we've given feedback about that based on everything we read, and that should be finalized by Monday. So we are moving along, and I want to thank our community for their feedback and their participation in the summer, and our staff, all our district employees, their time that they've spent getting, you know, giving their feedback, we appreciate it, and we will move forward. And that's all I have, does anyone else have any community updates?
Next Wednesday is National Night Out in Temple City, at Temple City Park. It, I believe it starts at six o'clock, the city will be providing dinner, free hot dogs, so come on out. The sheriff's department brings a lot of equipment out, other groups bring equipment out. It's usually a fun evening, and then it'll be followed by their weekly concert, I'm not sure what band it is, but I'm sure it's a good one. Sorry.
Okay.
Could you repeat that?
National Night Out, next one.
All right, so we will, thank you for that. We will move on to item number fifteen, district updates, starting with business services. Connie, what do you have for us?
Yes, good evening, board president, Ms. Espinoza, board education and inter-superintendent Dr. Torosian, Kevin. So first thing is everybody looking for the retro check. Starting tomorrow, the business service department will release the four point five raise retro checks for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. The picking up time will be eight to eleven a.m. and one thirty to four thirty p.m. at the district office. And the pick up date is from tomorrow to August nineteenth, or after August nineteenth, the staff can pick up if they work at school side. Please bring your ID for verification purpose, just in case our staff don't know you, because if you are new to the district, and all employees must sign when pick up your checks. So we make sure that everything will work very smoothly. I had a meeting with our new students board member, Emma King, and I'm very impressed by his leadership and the willingness to present our students and serving community. We will continue to communicate regularly, and I want to make sure that we listen to students' voice and answer their question timely.
Thank you, Connie.
So next one is, we have some very old HVSC unit at our high school campus, and they require a lot of attentions. So tonight, we will submit, submit a service agreement for hiring vendor to repair them on a timely manner. And in addition, we plan to conduct a district-wide HVSC assessment and come up with action plan, because as the board know that we have successfully applied AB eighty-four-one scholarship grant for the London and TCHS High School, which is part of the grant is the assessment. And the board has already approved us to apply for the round three for the rest of the school. And then the board will also prove the set aside for the S three to replace HVSC unit. So we will have a plan online to replace all of those units at the end of their lifespan.
Okay.
That's my update, thank you.
Quick question, just Connie, before we move on, I just want to know, for the high school, like the band room area and those people that do like some summer activities, will the HVAC be, will the system be working in, in those areas by the time they have their like camps and stuff toward the end of August?
Yeah, my, the information I am aware of is they are working, but it is not stable. So our plan is if on a certain hot day is not working, then we will move them to the other area, and we will call our vendor to come here, take look at, to address the issue timely. And I know that the school is starting soon in August twenty-four, so that's why we, we are, we put a banage right now, because the high school, TCHS has several very big units, thirty ton unit, unit thirty-five, and then most of them at end of their lifecycle, and we spent a ton of money just repair part of the, part of the equipment, and then the other part of our parts is broken. So that's why we want to come up with a comprehensive plan. The problem is we're in the summer, and the, as the board know that, we have the steps we need to go, the RFP, the, the bid process, so this summer, most likely we are not able to make it this summer, but we do target for next summer.
Okay, so we're patch, we're doing, we're trying to patch it until we can get all the, the proper steps to get the proper vendor in using, you know, the RFP process and all that.
Yes, and some units, if we cannot, because we also have experienced supply shortage, if the certain units we cannot replace by like kind to like kind, there is possibly trigger the DSA proof process. That is why we want to do the comprehensive assessment, and then if we do need a DSA, then we're going to go through the process, that's why we want starting early.
Okay, as long as those folks have some alternatives, I think that, that we just want to try to avoid having them, you know, do all of their stuff in like, you know, a very, very hot room, if we can. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'm sorry, okay. Next we have education services, Richard?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good morning. So we have the preschool, I want to give a, first a shout out to Mickey, for Mickey Wong for taking on the, or his cathy's. Thank Mickey Wong for all the hard work she's put into it, and thank Anthony and his crew for all the hard work they've done. We're in the final stages, and I mean final, final stages, of its completion. We have the fire marshal coming tomorrow to inspect it, there's a few more state inspectors after that, and then look forward to the grand opening, so an open house, back to school night type of thing, as we kick off the opening of that one. I cannot tell you how excited we are to have it finished, how excited we are to have the work finished in order to get it started, and how excited we are for our community to, to come enjoy that venue with us. It was a long time in the making, so Anthony, thank you, Mickey, if you're watching, thank you as well. We're in the process now of our student information system Ares, it will roll over to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the beginning of August, and for us in ed services, that's really the start of the next school year, like we could see schools starting, I know Amir probably doesn't want to hear that yet, but we see it happening, and so we've made that move. And in conjunction with Ares rolling over, we have data confirmation, so the window opens up where parents could then go in and update addresses, update phone numbers, upload any documentation that we may need in order to get their kids registered, so they get their classes during roundup just before school starts. So those are the, the two big things happening with Ares, and then the preschool, like I cannot say how happy, if you guys haven't had the opportunity to go by and look, please do, the, the, it's just, it's amazing, it makes me want to have little kid, like little little kid. Something like that. Little, like smaller than that, though.
That's exciting, very exciting. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Richard. All right, we'll move on to human resources. Dr. Katarion.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education. So hiring is the most important thing we do over the summer for HR, because it really impacts our student success and the success of our program. And getting the right people in the right positions is critical. We have been very pleased with the hiring and the quality of employees that we've been able to bring in. And one of the reasons is because positions have flown a lot earlier this year, and that's when you get the cream of the crop. With that said, we are still seeing some challenges with our classified vacant positions, of which we're kind of assessing where are the gaps, and how can we address them as soon as possible, and how creative can we get on these? We've created a flyer that we are launching out through a lot of different avenues, and that will also be on our website. And we are also coming up with some creative things for next steps for that. So I'm hopeful that we will get those filled, but we are pretty pleased with where we're at right now with hiring. And that is it for HR.
Great, and I'll just share that I, I know I shared our, the flyer, and I know some of the other board members shared the flyer. It's everywhere. So yes, we're looking for really great people to support our students, and hopefully we can get them. And I'm sure, I'm confident you guys will make it happen.
All right.
All right, item number sixteen, bargaining unit comments, TCEA, Shelley.
There she is.
Welcome.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I don't have a lot to report. I just wanted to thank the board for allowing TCEA to be part of the brainstorming with the COSCO group. We met with them last week, and we had about twenty-two members on the Zoom, which I thought was pretty good for a Friday morning in the summer. We had several other members who weren't able to be there, but emailed us or texted us with their input. And what was really exciting to me is I had watched the board meeting, the special board meeting, where you, the Board of Education, did the same exercises with the COSCO group. And a lot of what we said was exactly the same as what you guys said. And so that made me feel really hopeful, and that we all have kind of a similar vision, and I'm looking forward to it. So thank you, and that's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you for your update and your feedback. All right, do we have an update from Tessie for CSCA one oh five? Okay, and then how about, I don't see Art here for eight twenty-three? Did he leave any updates or anything? Okay. That, that, we have, now we can move on to item seventeen, which is board member updates. Tonight, we're going to start with member Bell. This is your first update, right? Or is it your second?
This is my second update. I think my second.
Well, if you went first last time, I'm sorry, because I usually have the order from the last time, and I keep that into, take that into consideration about who goes first this time. But I forgot to do that, so I'm just going off the top of my head, and I'm going to say, member Bell, go first.
I actually wanted to tell you, I enjoyed that, when you asked for roll call votes and stuff, and you mix it up. I think that's be good.
All right, cool.
Good evening, everyone. How is everybody? I hope everybody's enjoying their summer. And I, my update this evening will be quite brief, but first, I want to welcome Mr. King on our board as a representative for the student body. We really appreciate you being here. I want to thank all the administration and staff for all their hard work, especially during the summertime, because as we know, that's extraordinarily busy. And finally, I want to say thank you to all the stakeholders, to, and I'm talking about the staff, families, everybody, who responded in our quest to get a, an understanding of what they would like to see, the qualities and characteristics that will help our district move forward as we try to look for new leadership. So I want to thank all of them for all the time that they've given us. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, I like members Sneed's recommendation to go alphabetically, so we'll go with member Georgino.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to be brief also. Yesterday, I attended the TCHS ASB Leadership Retreat at Descanso Gardens, and I got to see all the students hard at work planning for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. They were in their little groups of. Committees, thank you, and working on whatever their, their job was for the year, and so that was really enjoyable. And I'm always amazed at what awesome students we have and how sharp they are, and how smart they are, and, and hardworking. And so I'm really looking forward to seeing what they do this next school year, and I'm looking forward to a joint meeting with them too, or a couple of them during the school year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you, member Georgino. We'll go next with member Smith.
You're actually next.
I, I'll go, I, I kind of defer myself to the end, so go right ahead. I get to talk too much, so I go last.
I don't have much to say either. I appreciate the input, Shilla, you just gave us in terms of the, your ability to provide input to the superintendent selection process, and then all those who have been helping out and joining those groups to, to share. I congratulate everybody, or hope you'll take that four and a half percent raise that you earn so well or so hard, especially over the last two years, and enjoy a little bit of what's left of summer. So spend that money well. And then I want to thank the three corporations who are in our agenda tonight, who donated seventeen hundred dollars to the district. That's much appreciated. Oh, and I almost forgot to welcome Amir too. Amir, I'll look forward to getting to know you better over the next year and enjoy your input, so thank you.
All right, thank you, member Smith. Members Sneed?
Thank you, President Espinoza. I want to thank the COSCO group for meeting with all the different stakeholder groups. They've been keeping us surprised of everything that's going on, so I really appreciate their work for us. I wasn't able to attend the ASB retreat yesterday, but Amir, I hope, I wish all of you the best of luck. I know you are outstanding leaders. For not just your, your fellow students, but for our district. So welcome to our board, but thank you to all your fellow ASB members, board members. Band camp is coming pretty soon. I believe it's starting in another week or so. The only other thing is, I noticed in our consent agenda, there's a long list of retirees and resignations, and I just want to wish all those people who are leaving us at this time, good luck in the future, and thank you for the service you've given us.
Thank you, members Sneed. All right, so for me, I hope everybody's enjoying their summer. I want to welcome our new student board member, Amir King. We're happy to have you. Thank you so much for being here. I also want to thank the donors who donated this period, this, this time around. We thank you for your, your support of our students, and, you know, I know our students do as well. They're very thankful. In terms of focus right now, when I think about what, what I've been doing since the last meeting, I would say it's all about the superintendent's search, and, you know, making sure that we keep progressing forward. So there's a huge focus there, and I want to thank all the feedback, all the stakeholders who provided feedback. I want to thank the COSCO group for their, for their work. They're working pretty hard and going, you know, very quick to, to meet a timeline, so we appreciate it. But they are, you know, taking to heart the fact that we said we wanted our community to get, to give their feedback, and we were not going to rush through that or cut it short. So I appreciate them working with us. I also want to publicly thank Marie and Andy for their work in, in this process, because I know they have full plates, and this is just an additional thing that they, they are doing. And it's, it's such a tight timeframe that lots of things need to be done, and so I appreciate their focus on that. In terms of attendance, I volunteered at the firework booth for grad night. I also attended, I think this was, we didn't have a meeting before this, but I'll just mention it, the interim superintendent meet and greet. So thank you for having that. It was well attended. And then I, I went to a couple concerts in the park, and they're so enjoyable after a long day of work to go and just hang out and listen to music. It was, they were really nice, and I appreciate that the city does that. And really, that's, that's all I have for tonight. Moving on to item number eighteen, student board member comments. Amir, what do you have for us?
Good evening, everyone. This being my first official meeting, I hope that you all wouldn't mind. I had a few remarks I wanted to make tonight. First off, I wanted to thank my peers at Temple City High School for trusting me with the responsibilities of serving as their student board member for them, and every one of the students on all of our district's campuses. I promise to make myself available to each and every student that would like an outlet to express their voice and concerns, and to advocate in the best of my abilities for their interests. To Board President Espinoza and my fellow board members, Bell, Georgino, Sneed, and Smith, thank you so, so much for welcoming me with open arms and for all the support that you've provided already. I could not be more grateful for this next year together, where I'm sure that we will work diligently to support the betterment of our campuses and to continue and uphold the quality education that our students deserve. To those that don't know me, I'm a proud student of Temple City High School going into my junior year. Since my mother immigrated to the San Gabriel Valley, we've been a TC family. I have three sisters that have gone through this district, with a brother graduating this upcoming year. As a kid, I attended La Rosa Elementary and Culverly, just wanted to show that off, following with Oak Avenue and now the high school. Onto some updates, this past, ugh, sorry. This past month has been a little hectic for me. About two weeks ago, Temple City High School's ASB leadership had the opportunity to attend the Cata-Castle Summer Camp for Student Leaders at the University of Santa Barbara. I know I speak for all of ASB when I say it was really good connecting with ASBs from across the state, learning their traditions, tricks, and more for a vibrant campus. This past week was also the CSBA's Leadership Institute previewed with a student board members training, all with which the help of Ms. Montero, I was able to attend. There, I learned valuable lessons on financing, the Brown Act, heard from leaders from across our state in education, and became friends with some of my fellow student board members serving in other districts across California. I'm almost done, I promise. This week was also when our high school's ASB had the retreat where we reflected on the past year and put ourselves hard at work to prepare ourselves for so many spirit events on the high school campus in the school year to come. We spoke with a former ASB member, Asia Garner, now the Communications Director for First Lady Jill Biden, on her experience as a student leader on campus, and how she utilized what she learned as an ASB member to drive her forward in her career. And then thank you to member Georgino for joining us at Descanso Gardens, even though I wasn't able to make it yesterday. I have some really exciting ideas that I've spoken with Connie about, which I look forward to hopefully bringing to our board. And a final thank you to Mr. Kidd, my ASB advisor, and Ms. Montero, who's been incredibly supportive with absolutely everything. Ms. Wu for bearing with my questions, Ms. Tamar, interim superintendent Throssian, Richard, I just met you today, and my teachers. I have Ms. Borjali, my eighth grade English teacher, and my friends and family for getting me here to where I am today. With less than a month away till school starts, as much as I am afraid to admit it, I am really excited to kick off what I know will be a fantastic year, and with a superintendent's search to look forward towards. Thank you all. That is the end of my comments.
All right, thank you. Good job.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item number nineteen, interim superintendent comments.
Thank you, Board President, members of the board. And I would also like to thank you for your warm welcome. It's been a pleasure serving Temple City Unified. It's a place with wonderful people, and having just met Amir today, and if you are a representative of all the students here, we are in for a treat. I have worked in many districts. I've never seen a student board member show up to a summer beanie. So my hat is off to you, sir. The, the one thing we, that we are focused on right now is with the rising cases in COVID, will that require a mask mandate? Will that trigger a mask mandate, rather, from the LA County Department of Public Health? And so Thursday mornings, we, Ms. Wu and I, participate in a weekly call with the Los Angeles County Office of Education and the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. This is what they are monitoring, and we are also monitoring. So we'll keep the board updated as we receive the recommendations and guidance from the experts.
All right, we'll move on to item number twenty, written communications. Do we have any written communications? I did not. Okay. Moving on to discussion information items. We have education service, educational services, item number twenty-one, partnership with Oak Avenue Intermediate School and Huntington Library and Gardens, and I believe Principal Lessum. And Marta Borjali, you're coming up.
Hi, thank you for being here.
Thank you, members of the board, and Mrs. Kepin. We've had a very exciting opportunity at a court with Huntington Gardens and Library, and I won't introduce, she goes to go introduce, but this poor guy. She really deserves all the credit. She put the work in, got all the materials in, and has been working with them and got this, brought this to our school. So I'm very proud of what she's done, so I'd like her to present this to the board.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
What a hype, Mrs. Kepin. Thank you so much for having us, Amir. I'm very excited. I'm very thankful to Mr. Lessum, who was able to support us in what is probably the most exciting thing I think I've ever done as a teacher so far. I've been working on getting a Huntington School partnership for about five or six years now. It is a very intensive application process. I'm an English major. I've never written so many essays in my life. You have to be able to explain when you lose every facet of the Huntington Gardens and the facilities, and you have to beat out every other community that also wants a part of this program. And it's a really amazing opportunity for our school. I don't know if everybody's been to the Huntington, but if you haven't, it's super close, and it's one of the most amazing places you can go to. There is a gigantic garden, several different gardens to visit. There's a library, there are museums with over forty-two thousand art exhibits or art objects, and they have an entire educational program. They've been working to develop their educational program for many years now, and there are like art, like slides of art that we could use. Their entire lesson plans that other schools have built and have shown success with. And we would have access to all of that if we decided to partner with them. When creating our, our partnership, one of the things that we have to do is we have to select a group of students that we want to focus in on, and we have to determine some goals. So what we decided to focus in on was. Hi.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Marta Borjali. It's so good to see you guys. We're excited to partner with the Huntington, okay. Our goal is to work with a group of students that are classified as ELD and also are special education students. But this program would benefit every single student at Oak Avenue Intermediate. I'm going to talk about the greater features of it, but first let me tell you about our goals. Our goals are to inspire curiosity of our students. My goal is to help our teachers find new and innovative ways to bring lesson plans to our students that take us out of the classroom and provide us with really cool opportunities to get out there and look at, you know, the real application of all the work that we're doing in the classroom. And then for teachers to kind of get used to and become more familiar with taking it outside the classroom. The school partnership benefits are that every single student, any person with an Oak Avenue ID, so I highly recommend you get one, would have the ability to go to the Huntington, and three people and that student would have free access to the Huntington. With tickets ranging at about twenty-five dollars a person, that's a hundred dollar value per student every time they wanted to go, with no limit as to how many times they could visit in a school year. The partnership is for two years, and my goal for our student body is to present it to the parents so that the parents know that that opportunity exists. And my hope is that families that maybe otherwise wouldn't have the financial means to visit the Huntington can go and take advantage of the partnership just to explore all of the great things that the Huntington has to offer. Now, on a more educational scope, my goal is to take that group of students that we're focusing in on and work with them on developing their language skills through actual application of like going into the gardens and seeing what we see, and then talking about it, writing about it, making poetry come alive by looking at nature and then actually writing the haiku, writing an ode, as opposed to talking about something in an abstract nature with a group of students that struggle a little bit more with learning English. However, that doesn't mean that only these students would benefit from field trips to the Huntington. The Huntington does. The Huntington does offer free field trips for us with five hundred dollars reimbursement toward every bus that we take, um, every bus trip that we take. So any teacher could take advantage of that. A science teacher could take their students on a science field trip. History can go take their kids on a science field trip and look at all of the art exhibits and all of the historical artifacts that exist. Um, they do, however, provide two very specific day-long trips for the students that we've selected. There's a deep dive where we partner with their educational specialists and we have the opportunity to learn from their educational specialists on ways that we can incorporate our goals and create lessons that will help our students. And then we have the opportunity to come back again in the spring and do a follow-up and just give our students the opportunity to put into practice the things that they've learned since our deep dive. So one would be in the fall and one would be in the spring. They provide food for all of our students in that, in that cohort. And it's just a really fun opportunity for that group of kids that hopefully will motivate them to put those English lessons into practice. It does require an MOU, which I think is my next slide. And part of that MOU is that they are giving us free admission. They are giving us the bus, the five hundred dollars toward each bus, which is a reimbursement. And in return, what they would like us to know is that their property is their intellectual property, so there is no plagiarism of their, their art, uh, like pictures and slides and things like that. We have to make sure we give credit to everything. And the other part of that is a reporting system where we report to them the things that we liked, the things that we didn't like, what we've learned, and then also working closely with our teachers in our group to create lesson plans that they can then add to their, to their vast collection so that they can use that to support other schools. And that's about it. I did it.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away.
Does anyone on the board have questions?
I do.
Okay, not... Members Smith.
So Marta, when did you graduate from high school?
A long time ago.
Were, were June Thurber and Shirley Rosenkranz teachers at the high school?
I don't know if I want to tell you that information.
It's the turn of the century.
Yes. You signed my, um, you signed my diploma, ma'am.
Anyway, I was really excited to, to read this and see what you're doing. And so as I thought about it, cause Shirley Rosenkranz and June Thurber used to have a similar program, only she was teaching students how to be docents and they would volunteer at Huntington Library.
I was one.
Oh, good for you.
That's why I did this.
So why not have these kids, when they, they move on from Oak, move up to the high school and have them use the knowledge they've learned by being docents and volunteering and getting community service hours?
That sounds great. I'll tell Phil.
I love that. That's great.
Thank you.
I think we could.
This is, this is so exciting. This is phenomenal because a lot of these students, a lot of our kids don't have a lot of chances to go to an art museum, to go be exposed to fine arts, to be exposed to what the gardens offer. This is, the fact that they can bring their family over there and share that with their family members. This is just phenomenal. Congratulations. This is
Big.
great job of, and tenacity that you showed, showed trying to get through their application process. But this is so exciting for, for your students and your future students and great job.
Definitely.
Congratulations and thank you so much for all the work you put into this, cause I know this is not necessarily part of your job and you chose to do it to help the students. I, I was just curious, um, is this just for middle schools or do they do it for other age schools?
They actually do it for all schools. Um, the high school was recently a member for, I think, two years ago. You can apply to re-up your two years, but it's such a rigorous process and there are so many other districts applying for it, that it's really hard to continue. So the fact that they took two different schools within Temple City is a really big deal.
Yeah, that's great.
But unfortunately, the high school kids wouldn't get to go. It's only open to the Oak kids.
Uh-huh, okay. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo all the, uh, comments by my fellow board members. It's, that is such a great opportunity and, uh, I'm such a strong believer of being able to apply what you learn and this is such a great example of it. And, uh, I hope the students that get to benefit from the, from, uh, this opportunity really enjoy it and I'm sure that they will. And I hope that, uh, as we move forward in the future, we can continue to, as together as a group, to find more of those opportunities for more of our students. So thank you so much.
No, thank you. I'll take Kylie with me.
Or if you need chaperones, you could always ask us.
You're on my list. Don't worry.
Great, well, thank you so much. Um, I think the next time, is this something we have to vote on next time? Okay, so that's the way we typically will do it. We'll just talk about it, get information, think on it, and then come back the next time and vote on it.
That's exciting.
We will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I sit down now?
All set. Indicators, Richard.
I'm not sure how I'm supposed to follow that. I don't know who did the agenda.
That's the community's clicker.
I love you, Richard. You're gonna do great.
Thanks, guys. Walk out of the room.
Unless the door hit you on the way out.
So I get the pleasure tonight of presenting local indicators. These are done in conjunction with, um, our LCAP and so...
Maybe.
The, I think the key is the word local. And so within the LCFF, the Local Control Funding Formula and the LCAP, there's a lot of data that's collected at the, the state level. So discipline data, cash data with test scores, all that type of stuff is collected at the state level, but there's local items as well. And so this is what the local, um, indicators kind of target. And so there's some, um, items we have to do. So it has to reflect the emphasis on local control, and these are those local indicators. Um, it enables LEAs, which is us, to measure progress using local data, and again, it's that local part. It provides valuable information necessary for stakeholders to engage in meaningful engagement with a holistic understanding of local success and challenges. And again, it's that local part, the successes and the challenges. Um, and then it informs the Local Control and Accountant Plan, the LCAP, in the planning process. So if you're looking at the screen, um, we have priority areas which are goals within the LCAP, and then you have the, the bottom one in the middle, those are the state ones. So those are the ones that the state collects and those are reflected in the LCAP itself. The local indicators, so the basic conditions of schools, the implementation of state and academic standards, parent engagement, school climate, and access to a broad course of study, that's what we get to report out on. That's where we do the self-reflection, say, are we meeting these? So local indicators are measured through a reflection tool that's recommended by the California Department of Ed. They're measured annually and they're shared with the board. The piece that's missing there is then the information that is also shared with the public through the California Dashboard, the California School Dashboard. Um, and then there's four, are three areas in which you could rank yourself into. There's standard met, there's not met, and then there's not met for two or more years. And so again, the, the standards are there, um, the, sorry, the indicators are there. Basic conditions, implementation of state standards, parent engagement, school climate, and access to a broad range of study. So for basic conditions of school, we have appropriately signed teachers, assigned teachers. We have access to aligned instructional materials. We have safe and clean facilities, and we met that. And so for all of these, including this one, I think these are why we pride ourselves in Temple City. And so because we do meet them each year and because we, as us, as well as Anthony, as well as the unions, take pride in it, it, it really is that, that local reflection. Um, ELA, ELD, California standards, math, we have California standards, NGSS, so the Next Generation Science Standards, we're in progress. Um, shout out to Amy and Scott who are not here, who are heading that up to adopt a new curriculum for science. And then social studies, we're meeting California State Standards as well, so we meet the implementation of state standards. Parent engagement, um, we have a ninety-seven percent usage of Parent Square. Um, it's an invaluable tool. I wish Jordan wouldn't have left yet, so you asked them the information that is sent out. We use Parent Square to for everything. Both students and parents get the information that's sent out. Um, it's an amazing tool. We've held multiple, uh, parent surveys this year, the past year, and they're always sent out in three languages. And then there's, um, engagement opportunities both at site and district levels. And so we met this one as well. And school climate, um, this one's probably my, my favorite one when I started looking at the data. So over sixteen hundred of our students responded to the, the LCAP survey that went out in April. Eighty-two felt supported by teachers when struggling. Eighty-two also, eighty-two percent also felt safe at school. And so for our school climate, that's a met as well. And then access to a broad range, a broad course of study. Um, a hundred percent of our students have access to a broad course of study, and that's kind of dictated by ed code, but it's also what our teachers do. And so this is the greatness again of Temple City, that we have amazing students who ask and we have amazing teachers who give. Um, and then there's always the expansion of course offerings. So Amir, what you had your freshman year, you now have extra courses, you're seeing, you will have extra courses your senior year as we continue to roll stuff out. And the rollout that I want to see is steam classes down to the lower level. And so we also meet that standard. So what's next for us? Um, in September, I'll upload the local indicators to the California Dashboard. Um, and then in January, we'll analyze the California Schools Dashboard and identify areas of strengths and opportunities for growth. And again, these are at the local level. And then in April, we'll use the California Dashboard data to help start updating the LCAP for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, um, which I can't believe we're talking about April and it's only August. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have any comments or questions for Richard?
Yes.
Richard, I just want you to know that was the most fascinating presentation on local indicators I've ever seen. Somebody else were presenting next, they'd be petrified.
Just put me in front of Marta.
Uh, all right. Anybody else? I thought it was a great presentation. Thank you so much. All right, we'll move on to the discussion action portion of the agenda. Item number twenty-three, under Administration, Adoption of Resolution Two-Two-Two-Three-Dash-Zero-One, Recognizing a State of Emergency and Reauthorizing Teleconference Meetings Pursuant to AB Three-Sixty-One. Um, this is, um, I know, did you want to speak on this one, Kathy? I mean, it's pretty self-explanatory, but we're doing it because the numbers are rising and we may have to switch to, um, Zoom meetings at some point. Let's hope not, but it might happen and we need to have it authorized. All right, may I get a motion and a second for this? I'll second. Motion by Member Smith, second by Member Georgino. Um, preferential vote from Student Board Member King.
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye? Oh, is it, oh, that's right, it's a resolution, I'm sorry. Um, they're on the other page, the next page. Okay, sorry. All right, um, I am a yes, Member Smith.
Yes.
Member Bell?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And Members Sneed?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes five-zero. And we move on to item number twenty-four, Adoption of Resolution Two-Two-Two-Three-Dash-O-Two, Authorization of Revised Certification of Signatures. Um, can I get a motion and a second? All right, motion by Member Sneed, I'll second. Um, and then we have a description of this, some background from Connie?
Yes, um, this revision basically add our interim superintendent, Dr. Catherine Therosian, as one of the authorized signature person, and as well as Mr. Be, and Ms. Bell, after he, and he joined us at the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Connie? All right, let's go ahead and move to the roll call vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
All right, um, Member Georgino?
Yes.
Members Sneed?
Yes.
Member Smith?
Yes.
I'm a yes, and Member Bell?
I do have one quick question and I want to refer to Member Smith on this one as well. Um, because my name is on there, is it customary for me to abstain or?
No.
What, I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're saying.
Because I'm on the...
Does he need to abstain?
That's true, okay, then, yes.
You're gonna personally benefit me from that.
All right, so we have, uh, a unanimous vote of five-zero, that motion passes for that resolution. And we move on to item number twenty-five, Received Board Policies for First Read. Uh, may I get a motion and a second?
So vote.
Motion by Member Bell, second by Member Georgino. And, um, this is a routine item that we have here, just updating for first read, um, the listed, um, policies. Do we need, um, does anyone want for the public to review? Should I just read these to, to let people know what we're... Okay. So we're, um, for first read, we have, um, Board Policy Zero-Four-Two-Zero Dot Forty-One, Charter School Oversight. Board Policy Three-One-One-Zero, Transfer of Funds. Policy Board, uh, Board Policy Three-Five-Two-Three, Electronic Signatures, which is new and optional. Board Policy Number Three-Five-Five-Zero, Food Services Slash, uh, Child Nutrition Program, which also is, um, labeled as optional. We have Board Policy Three-Five-Five-One, Food Services Operations Slash Cafeteria Fund. And we have Board Policy Three-Five-Five-Three, Free and Reduced Price Meals. All right, are there any questions or comments about any of the first read items? All right, we'll go ahead and move to the vote. Uh, preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
All right, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. That brings us to item number twenty-six, which I was, um, I'm gonna go ahead and read out something before we get the motion, so let me go ahead and read that. Tonight, the Board is considering the recommended approval of an employment agreement setting forth the terms and conditions of Dr. Kathy, Catherine Therosian to serve as the District's Interim Superintendent of Temple City Unified School District. Government Code Section Five-Four-Nine-Five-Three requires the Board, prior to taking final action, to provide an oral summary of a recommendation for approval of, on salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive during the open meeting in which the final action is to be taken. Therefore, I am providing an oral summary of the recommendation being considered by the Board this evening. One, the term of agreement is from July first, twenty-twenty-two through September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. The term of the agreement may be extended through written mutual agreement, but in no event will it exceed forty-five day, workdays. Two, Dr. Therosian's daily rate is one thousand ninety-seven and nine cents, not to exceed fourteen thousand three hundred per month, based on the mutually agreed upon work calendars, which are incorporated in the agreement. And three, subject to district policy and protocols, Dr. Therosian may be reimbursed for any actual necessary and reasonable expenses incurred within the scope of her employment, including mileage reimbursement for district-related travel. Before the Board of Education takes action, are there any speakers to this item? Okay. Now can we get a, a motion to approve this employment agreement?
I'll move.
All right, motion by Member Georgino and second by, I kinda had a tie I heard from both. I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, take Members Sneed on this one. Um, and we will go ahead, unless there's comments or questions. We'll go ahead and move to the vote. Prefer, preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
All right, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. We move on to item number twenty-seven. Um, Approval of Temporary Contract Extension for Interim Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. Can I get a motion and a second for this?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Member Georgino, second by Member Smith. And we have, um, Dr. Therosian, any of, any like background information you want to provide on this one?
Absolutely, President Espinoza, members of the board. Last year, we had an agreement with, uh, to have an interim Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services. While, uh, our friend here, Richard Loewen, was out, he was able to return for a brief period, uh, and, but then had to go back on leave. The contract, because of Mr. Loewen's return, was voided upon his return. And so this really is an extension because the person appointed as the interim superintendent, Assistant Superintendent of Educational Services really did continue in that role in May and June.
Okay.
And we are thankful for his service.
Definitely.
As we are thankful for Richard's return.
Yes.
I mentioned that presentation earlier.
All right, any questions or comments for Dr. Therosian? All right, let's move to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. We'll move on to item number twenty-eight, Approval of Stipends for Additional Job Responsibilities. Can I get a motion and a second on this one?
I'll move.
Okay, I'll second. Motion by... Motion by Member Georgino, second by me. And so, Dr. Therosian, any background on this one?
Yes, President Espinoza, members of the board, one of the stipends to be approved is for Connie Wu, who serves as our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services. In June, the board took action to appoint Ms. Wu to serve as the administrator in charge, while the former superintendent was on leave or otherwise unavailable. And also for Ms. Wu to serve as the administrator in charge when I am not working or I'm unavailable. So pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, this is an oral summary of the recommended action, which is a stipend in the amount of $2,400 for 10 workdays in June 2022, and an ongoing stipend in the amount of $1,500 per month for the months of July through September 2022. An amendment to Ms. Wu's employment agreement will be presented to the board at its next regular meeting. In the meantime, the board is asked to take actions that Ms. Wu can be compensated for the work she is performing and has already performed.
Great, okay. Any comments or questions? All right, let's go ahead and move to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
All right, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We move on to Business Services. Recommendation to Approve Notice of Completion Forms Relating to La Rosa Elementary Two-Story Classroom Roof Repair/Restoration Project. Can I get a motion and a second for this one?
I'll move.
All right, motion by Members Sneed, second by Member Georgino. And Connie, background on this one?
Yes. We, the board approved Hi Tramco to replace the problematic roof at La Rosa. And we, the new roof have a new 15-years warranty, and we also add a working pad install for safety purpose. So by the board approved the notice of completion, it's going to shorten the vendor or subcontractor supply for the Tramco to, to find, stop notice and the mechanical links. So here are some pictures and presented by, provided by our director. This is the finished product. The roof is already replaced. And this is the work in progress when in the course of they replace the roof. So we can see contracts of work on the top of the roof. And then this is also towards the end of the finished replacement. So that's all the presentation for this agenda. And any question? We have a director here to answer all the questions. But thank you for this project.
All right, any questions? I did, I did have one. So, was there like some final walkthrough to confirm that the work was done appropriately, and it looks good, and you know, all of that? I just want to make sure.
Good evening, Board President. Good evening, Board President Espinoza and members of the board. Yes, there was actually a walkthrough done with not only our staff. So I've spoken on this previously. We have highly qualified maintenance staff, with a couple, a few of them with some contractor license that really know their stuff. So part of my goal with the MNO and facilities is to bring them along with any project we do, that we do, so that they can kind of point out as we go along and then after finished projects, since they've done this stuff previously, before working for Temple City Unified. So, we walked it with Rob Berg, we walked it with Tramco rep Harvey, and then we walked it with the actual installer and the owner of the roofing company. So all of us walked it at the completion, and as well, we were getting updates. And so during that first week, I was out on vacation, and we would send our staff to go up there daily and monitor before and after in the evening to make sure, or in the afternoon to make sure that progress is being made and to kind of pinpoint those areas of concern while they happened, instead of reacting after the fact.
Excellent, okay, great. Thank you, thank you for your work and that diligence there. Any other questions? Okay, let's go ahead and go to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to item 30, Approval of Facility Use Policies and Procedures Revision. Can I get a motion and a second for this one? All right, motion by Member Bell, I'll second. And do we have any background information on this one?
Yes, Andy, I need your help. It's, the PowerPoint is gone. I can start talking while Andy help us to put the PowerPoint up. So, we revised the facility use application form by adding certain language, such as certain facility may require supervision by certain district personnel. The purpose is our district personnel know in and out our campus. So by such requirement, make sure that during the facility use, our campus will still keep in good condition. And we will tell them where is certain equipment hosted or stored, so they can use it. We also remove certain language for the COVID-19 protocol, which is no longer appropriate because of the change of the policies and the practice from the LA County Department of Public Health. And also, we also add certain language, labor charge will be calculated based on the current compensation level and improves at the district direction of the school district. So that is actually the main purpose for this revision. Because when we're starting the policy, the personal changes, and this is slide, the left-hand side is the original one, the right-hand side is a revision. The square section is the revision come from. Instead of the flat dollar amount for $40, we provide the range to more accurately reflect the staff cost. For example, we, oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. So for example, originally, we say most of staff is $40, but we were able to, for the regular rate, we were able to provide range from 29 to 41, depending on the position. And for the overtime, we really actually provide the range from, because overtime, we pay employee 1.5%. So what happened right now, for example, the custodian who work at the weekend, their 1.5 overtime rate maybe actually is $51. But because of current policy, we can only build outside user for $40. This is end of the district absorb $11 per hour, which is against our practice because we are public entity, and we have responsibility to make sure that we only, the public taxpayer money only pay for our operation. So that is why we want to make sure that the community understand we're not changing all the facility use fee, which is only make sure that the district get reimbursed. I like our interim superintendent, Dr. Therosian said, we basically get the full reimbursement for cost the district occur as a result of facility use.
Yes, any, all right. So no rates are changing in terms of the use. It's just coverage for us to break even on the labor costs for upkeep after their use. That's correct. Okay. No questions? Okay, we will move to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We will move on to item 31, Approval of Budget 2021-22 Adjustments. Can I get a motion and a second? Motion by Member Smith, I'll second. And any background information on this one?
Yeah, sure. The board approved the AB 1200, which is the documentation County Office of Education required for the raise for 4.5%. The AB 1200 also required the district to revise the budget after the board approval. So the check is ready, we're going to send it to, issue to our staff. But at the meantime, we need to make sure that our budget is correctly reflect this raise. So that is the whole point of this agenda. And then as a result, again, this dollar amount is only for budget change, not necessarily the cost for 4.5% raise. So the general fund, we're going to have an increase of budget for $956,884. And the fund 111314 will always, all increase their budget according because of this raise.
Okay. All right, any questions for Connie? All right, seeing no questions or hearing no questions, we'll go ahead and go to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. On to item 32, Approval of Budget Revision for 2022-2023 Fiscal Year. May I get a motion and a second? Motion by Member Georgino, second. By Member Bell? All right. And the background information on this one?
Yes, this budget revision is for this new fiscal year, which is 2220, and then the previous budget revision is actually for the 2122 school year because of the salary increase is for the last school year, also the fiscal year. So the, the adult budget, once the state adopt its budget, the district required to revise our adult budget within 45 days. So our next regular scheduled board meeting is August 24, which is above beyond the 45 days. So when we look at the governance proposal with our adult budget, we are very close with our budget. Certain assumption, I will wait because, for example, there is broad grant, the learning recovery emergency program, as well as the art music instructional material program. We really, I think it's prudent to wait until we know actual allocation. Because right now, it's based on the prior ADA, and then there's change for how we calculate ADA, so we will wait. But this one, I am confident that because the board approved the math textbook adoption, we did not receive the textbook in the 2122 school year. Most likely was this school year. So we're going to reduce the last year's budget and increase this year's budget, which is not included in adult budget. That's why I want the board approve this revision.
Got it. All right, any questions for Connie? Okay, let's go ahead and move to the vote. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We move on to Consent Agenda, and this is a routine item, routine items approved by one motion and one vote, unless a member of the board or audience requests that any item be reviewed and voted upon separately. Do we have anybody that wants to pull any item from consent? Okay, so we will go ahead and ask for a motion for approval of Consent Agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Member Smith?
Second.
Second by Member Georgino. Preferential vote from Student Board Member King?
Yes.
And all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item number 41, Board Requests and Comments. Do we have any board comments or requests tonight?
Do you know item 42?
Did I, no, I'm on 41 right now. I did have one, and I, I'm just thinking about our evening tonight, and I forgot to ask the COSCA group if we're going to need a special meeting before, you know, our next regular board meeting. So I will ask that and send a one-way communication to let you know if we do have to have one. Because we want to keep the process moving forward. But I forgot to ask, and so I will ask and let you know. Any other comments or?
I guess we just have, our next meeting is the end of?
It's a long time from now, yeah. So we might, I don't know. I don't know what's next on the, on the agenda and if they need us to meet again. So I'll ask that question and get you the information as soon as possible. I know people have, you know, vacations and things planned, especially as we get later into August. So I'll see what we, if there's anything we need to do.
Or we can do a Zoom meeting too.
True, we can do that. We can do Zoom if that's needed.
Would that be an open or closed meeting?
It's open. Yeah, it's an open. It's going to be open. Okay, so we are now on to item number 42, Future Agenda Items. We have Accelerated High School College Policy Dual Language Immersion Program and the Review of the Governance Handbook, Mission, Vision, and Goals. Anything that we want to add here?
I have something.
Okay.
Yes, in reviewing the facility use fees, I noticed that we had on here the Milham Little League Field with Lights, which is in conflict with the joint use agreement we have with the city. So I talked to Connie about this, and I'd like to have Connie review the joint use agreement because I don't think you were even familiar with it, were you? So, so have her review that, and then she can get back to us and let us know any kind of modifications we need to make. Because I saw the one right off the bat, but there may be others also, so. If we could have Connie do that.
Okay, and then report back to us?
Yes.
So it'd be like a discussion information?